Order the town of New Windsor Town Council meeting for June 5th, 2024. If everyone would rise and join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our meetings are recorded electronically. We go by an agenda. Anyone wishing to have something addressed by the town council should have had it to the town hall by three o'clock on the previous Wednesday, the last Wednesday of the previous month. Anyone wishing to speak tonight, that's not on the agenda. We ask you to sign the paper over there. Already approval of minutes from the May 1st, 2024 town council meeting that Dana has emailed out to everybody. Do I hear a motion for approval? I make a motion to approve?
I second. We have a motion saying to approve the minutes of the May 1st, 2024 town council meeting.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, so carry. Mayor's report. Already, May 2024 mayor's report. In May, I attended the town council meeting, musical on the main meeting, and the work session. I've been working on two grants, a community legacy grant and a strategic demolition grant. The community legacy grant is for the renovations at 211 High Street, and the strategic demolition grant is for the building stabilization of Dillman Inn. I'll have more information on the 211 renovations later in the meeting. I'm working with Lewis Contractors to get a scope of work and cost estimates for Dillman Inn. Surrogate writer Mike Reynolds has already started on the grant for Dillman Inn, and he'll be working on that grant. Musical on the main, I've secured three bands, which the committee approved earlier today, this evening, for this year's event, if the committee agrees to it, and they did. So we're gonna have Trinidad and Tobega Baltimore Steel Orchestra start, and then Sons of Pirates, and then finish with Half Serious. I'm coordinating with Laura Bankert, who is the Outreach and Events Director for Historical Society of Carroll County, to find speakers for their July 11 history, Shake It and Stir New Windsor. This will take place at Cavalant Spirits from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. So I'm still looking for a couple speakers. So if anybody from the Heritage Committee would like to speak, I'll check with Frank, maybe, and I'll try to get Marcy Munshire from the fire company. I attended the Springdale Prep School Development Review Meeting and the Water and Sewer Meeting. These meetings were informational and discussion on their 10-year master plan. Along with the assistance of U.S. Senator Van Hollen's office, I secured an American flag that flew over the U.S. Capitol. This flag will be presented to the widow of a 27-year veteran of the United States Marine Corps. And just to tag along, if anybody would like to have a flag for deceased member of veteran, I can at least contact Senator Van Hollen's office. So that was a nice, I want to thank Senator Van Hollen's office for their support in that, and it was over a short period of time. I thought I could get a U.S. flag that flew over the state Capitol, but they don't give them out, for whatever reason. So I went to U.S. Capitol and got one there. Attended the New Windsor Fireman's Carnival, working the pretzel trailer in the ticket booth. And Monday, I attended the Francis Guy Key High School's class of 2024 graduation, supporting our local students. And that is my report. Anybody have any questions? Council committees, community enhancement, Councilman Guberinitis?
Don't have a lot to report on, just attending the regularly scheduled meetings as everybody else. I've been going through the paperwork and ideas that previous Councilwoman Guberwoman had a Gubermon, am I pronouncing that right? Sharon's last name? Okay.
Ribbon Lindeman.
Okay. So I've been going through her paperwork and whatnot, as to some things applied to what I'm doing, and I'm reaching out to other people to discuss, you know, how to move on some of the things and some of their ideas and input. And that's all I have for right now.
And for next year, I'd like to see you work on Memorial Day service.
Okay.
Since we didn't have one this year.
All right.
Public Works, Councilman Huffman?
Hi, good evening. Public Works highlights for the past month include, as spring is in full swing, so is our Public Works Department. They've been keeping the flyers watered that were planted on beautification day. They've also been extremely busy with the grass mowing. At this time of the year, their goal is to mow all the town properties weekly. Public Works coordinated and is overseeing repairs to siding and fascia at the pump station building, and repairs to the concession stand building at the Lions Club field. Springtime generates much yard waste, and Public Works has been collecting it, per the schedule, twice a month. Starting in June, Public Works will add the Snyder's Summit community to the rounds as well. They're very busy picking up yard waste. You may have noticed new lights illuminating the flags at Main Street Park. Public Works coordinated with the contractor to have that work completed. The cupola for the gazebo is also completed and will be installed soon. Public Works cleaned the streets with our street sweeper prior to the Fireman's Carnival. Appreciate their efforts making our town look its best prior to the big event. And Public Works also installed the veterans banners prior to Memorial Day. The planning commission, we did meet in May. The commission had a lengthy and hearty discussion on the criteria for making updates to the town's growth area boundary, as well as on the property annexation process. You can maybe hear a little bit more about that later in the meeting. Our next scheduled meeting is Monday, June 24th. And some councilman highlights for myself, attended the town council and planning commission scheduled meetings, attended the music on the main meeting, attended the Lions Club Community Appreciation Dinner, appreciate that invitation to that. Attended a meeting between the town, county, and Springdale Preparatory School to discuss site development process and water and sewer. Met with Public Works Director Myers and Public Works Supervisor Tovary to walk through the church street and Main Street intersection road markings. Fire hydrant, limited site area, and parking spot designation guidance were followed. The curbs will now be painted appropriately and signage will be installed. The guys did a great job taking everything into consideration down in that area. And now it's over to Deputy McGuinness for enforcement. I met with Public Works Supervisor Tovary, and we walked through Fountain Park, Main Street Park, and Lions Club Park. We developed a manageable list of items that Public Works could work on that would improve the appearance of these parks.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very busy. And also, I want to tag along on, Councilman Huffman's a street sweeper, really did make the town look really nice for the parade. So even though, I don't think the crowd was quite what it had been in the past, but at least, you know, the streets looked great. So thank you. Water and Sewer, Councilman Hall?
All right, so on the 100th block of Main Street, there was a water leak. Public Works had a new water lateral meter vault installed, and then about two weeks later, the completed the paving on that repair. On the Snyder's booster station, piping has been complete, and Public Works is now scheduling an RFP to paint the inside. And then also, as everybody knows, work continues on the Main Street water line replacement project. And I also attended the Springdale 10-year master planning meeting with others, and that's all I have.
Thank you. And just to tag along, and I'm sure Director Myers will comment on it, but overall, I think the citizens have been understanding. I'm sure there's still gonna be some people that will complain about the water pressure and the color of the water, but we're doing, the staff is Gary and everybody's doing, and Dana and whoever's posting on Facebook, is doing about as much as we can to inform people. And if people don't know about the water pressure and the color by now, I don't know what we can do. But we're doing everything, the town staff is doing everything they can to notify people and give the information out there. So thank you for town staff for getting the information out there. It's very helpful, and I think it's cutting down on the complaints. We're gonna get them, we're gonna get them no matter what, but.
Call, it's going, why is it brown? But again, can't please everybody.
Some of these things are not the main street.
Yeah.
Project.
Yeah.
Other things here.
Things that happen, so.
But no welcome.
I will say though, too, like Wayne, Wayne's been really on top of it. Mid-Atlantic, too, has been, like, whenever there's an issue, they respond almost immediately. So we couldn't ask for a better contractor.
It's been very smooth.
And then when residents, when residents notice that there's water running out of a fire hydrant or down the street, they still notify us because they don't know if it's part of the project or not. But we actually appreciate that because that aids us in tracking down issues and things like that. So that's a good thing.
Yeah. Thank you, everybody. Public Safety and Health, Councilman Cornet?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Have a brief report. Meetings and events attended for the month of May were a public health and safety meeting at the Carroll County Health Department for the opioid prevention coalition on 5/8. Also attended the New Windsor Fireman's Carnival, participated at the ice cream stand, gained five pounds. And then, of course, the Lions Club Community Dinner. Upcoming events, meeting is again the opioid convention, opioid coalition meeting on 7/10. And I'm gonna try to get to another health department meeting, maybe next week. We'll see if we can fit that one in as well.
Thank you. And just to touch on that Lions Club Community Dinner, New Windsor Lions Club invited several organizations to show appreciation for what they do for this town and the community, and it is surprising how much we have going on by so many organizations to make this town what it is. So again, thank everybody that helps in whatever capacity they do to help others. Economic Development, Councilwoman Schultz?
Same meetings as everyone else, or most of the same meetings, council, work session, the Lions Dinner. Also, as any of you know, represent New Windsor on the Human Services Program or HSP Board, and we only had one meeting this month. If you didn't see it, there was a nice piece in the newspaper about HSP, either yesterday or the day before, so if you haven't seen it, check it out. I noticed that the Miller Center at the Community College is having a marketing conference specifically for entrepreneurs and small businesses. So if anybody out there is starting or wants to grow, it's very inexpensive, it's only $20 for Carroll County residents. It's June 21st from 9:00 to 3:00, and it includes breakfast and lunch. And then the Carroll County Downtown's Economic Group did not meet in May, they are meeting tomorrow, so I will have an update from them. I'm meeting with Kim and Dana from the town staff next week, because we're gonna develop a piece for the newsletter that focuses on New Windsor businesses. Dana already had some good ideas, so we'll have more to say about that soon. Sort of dovetailing on the conversation or the comment that Director Myers made about people sharing concerns, I just want to remind everybody that the town Facebook page is really not the best vehicle if you have an issue, because it's not monitored 24/7, and the staff might not see something for hours or even days if it's the weekend. Sometimes I see it, sometimes I don't. So if you do have a problem, please call the town hall during business hours, you can also email.
There's even some council members and staff that are on Facebook. If you really need to get ahold of somebody, you can get ahold of somebody.
Right, exactly.
All right, thank you. Town Manager, Gary?
All right, so 1,000 Green Valley Road property, the MOU for well drilling update. Springdale Prep finally provided the town with a revised MOU on May 15th. From the town's perspective, the changes made to the MOU are too restrictive, the limitations put in on the MOU are not possible and unacceptable. Limitations are as follows. Limiting the town to drilling only three test wells between June 1st and July 1st of this year, not permitting drilling or mechanical noise of any kind from 8:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. on weekdays while school or summer programs are in session, and limiting all the town efforts to be completed by November 30th of this year. Sent an email to Springdale Prep's attorney on May 30th, after consulting back and forth with Carroll County and Attorney Ostrander stating the revised MOU is a nonstarter due to the limitations. The town has requested a meeting with Carroll County, and if the meeting occurs, pending the outcome, the town will be in touch. I can actually update on that, that they've stated their stance, which I think I'll allude to later, that they don't have any leverage with the school due to the current lease, or they're not taking a stance, whatever you want to say. So I don't, I'm not wasting anybody else's time for another meeting with them.
So, well, the MOU could really be between us and the county, right?
That's not what they're saying. They're saying it's between us and the school.
Who's saying?
The county.
The county is.
Chris. Yeah. So, the MOU also requested compensation by Carroll County to Springdale Prep in the form of mutually agreeable rent abatement and reduction in purchase price. County sent an email on 5/30 stating they are not interested in discussing rent abatement or other financial terms related to the rental agreement with the school as part of the MOU. Requested a meeting with county in a final effort, I think I repeated that, about well drilling. They responded stating they don't have the leverage, again, due to the school's active lease, and view the negotiations to be between the town and the school. However, they still are in support of the town. Attorney Ostrander had an extensive conversation with Springdale's attorney on 5/31. Their attorney stated drilling would have to be limited to primary area only. We had a couple areas designated on a map, and they wanted to know exactly where the wells will be by November 30th, which we can't do. So we've spent, the town staff spent significant time, effort, money trying to get approval to drill wells at the 1,000 Green Valley Road property. In my opinion, Springdale Prep is not willing to work with the town enough to make it possible and less restrictive. Springdale has not been accommodating or cooperative with the town in the last four or five years. County has stated their position. Unfortunately, I believe this project is stalled due to a continued lack of cooperation from Springdale. It may be time to focus our efforts elsewhere on other options. However, the Green Valley Road property is the most highly favorable location to produce the highest yields, according to two hydrogeologists. Aside from Atlee Ridge well location, alternative locations would likely require purchasing property of lower yields requiring multiple wells and significantly increased cost to the town possibly double. Can you come answer questions on that before I move on?
Yeah. Not this time.
I left a big area for discussion. Okay.
Do we have? I'm sorry, Gary, do we have a next step?
Their attorney suggested, and Michelle can elaborate on it, that was a meeting they had individually. They said, she suggested that they, Springdale's attorney suggested that there, another meeting virtually to discuss it, but I don't, I don't see it, I don't see it being adjusted enough. I believe it's a timeframe issue. We're not gonna, we're not gonna issue an RFP to drill wells until we have a signed agreement. So the dates, we're already into June, the day when they want us to drill, and we don't know how long or exactly where the things are gonna be, or what's gonna be needed. You know, it's really, you know, I was really hoping the county would be more involved than it could be between us and the county, but.
My concern, well, I got lots of concerns, okay, but one that rises right to the top is that Springdale, I believe they said during one of our meetings, is supposed to purchase the property at the end of this year, December?
That's the current agreement.
That's the current agreement, right? Okay.
December 30th.
So if the county is not helping us move this along, and we're already halfway through the year, you know, coming up, we could, in essence, if they sell this property to the Springdale Prep School in December, then all bets are off.
Well, but our very first meeting, I addressed that, and the county said they would basically support that, that it would be in the agreement that we would still have rights to it. Now, well, not that.
We can't even, we can't even drill when the county owns it, we can't even get this rolling. How are we ever gonna do it?
It was supposed to be in the final agreement, so I don't know.
What is the, what is the timeframe? Why is this June to July thing? Did they talk about what that is?
I don't know if the attorneys talked about it, but Michelle will be here later.
Probably where the school will probably be empty. They'll probably start bringing kids in in August.
But that doesn't make sense, because they go on to say no drilling between 8:00 and 3:30.
Yeah.
We're not gonna have a well driller come in at 3:30 and work at night.
Seems like a strange timeframe, June 1st to July 1st.
Maybe this is a closed session meeting with Michelle.
Yeah.
I have some ideas, and I don't know if that would fly or not, so.
Like I said, it is, it is the best option from, according to two hydrogeologists, when we have higher hydroterror and the county hydrogeologists.
There's a, there's a lot on the line for our entire community, honestly. And in one of the meetings, they mentioned how community oriented they want to be, well, this is a good way to show that. And then I'll say.
All right, enough for now. I mean, I.
I refrain from my, till closed session.
Okay. Next, I have the Huff property, also known as the Beecham Farm request. Councilman Huffman alluded to some discussions in the planning commission about the growth area boundary and the annexation process. On May 14th, I received an email from an attorney, from Matt Huff, in connection with 170-acre property he owns off Hawk Hill Road. It's known as the Beecham Farm. The email contained a letter addressed to the mayor and council, care of town manager, and the Planning and Zoning Commission. Letter requested the Beecham Farm be shown as coming into the town and any updates being made to the 2007 New Windsor Community Comp Plan as amended in 2010, and that the property be added to the future municipal growth area. The email was forwarded to Mayor Rube, Attorney Ostrander, and Planning Commission Chairman Mark Schultz. The letter and attached maps are in tonight's folder, in their own separate folder, if you want to look at those, look at that information. This is the first request for inclusion into the municipal growth area and possible annexation in New Windsor in a long time, and the process is unclear to Planning Commission members, myself, and likely most of all of you. Attorney Ostrander provided information on the process, and just wanted to summarize that in a general overview. So the planning commission is the first step. Planning commission should request a presentation from Huff property representatives at an upcoming planning commission meeting. Planning commission determines whether to include the property in the municipal growth area or not. Planning commission includes or does not include the property in the comp plan currently going through review and update. Upon completion, the comp plan has to be reviewed and approved by Carroll County, local agencies, and Maryland Department of Planning. Upon approval by Maryland Department of Planning and after public hearing, the comp plan is recommended to council for adoption. Council can adopt, modify, remand, or disapprove the whole plan or any part of the plan again after public hearing. If council approves the comp plan with Huff property included, the formal annexation property can begin. The annexation process is established by state statute and has many steps. There's a lot to consider in a lengthy, multi-step process, but making you aware of all other requests and the information received. It has to be put in the growth area boundary first before it can be annexed, I believe. That's kind of it. So I think I ciphered through Michelle's direction.
So that's what I alluded to, we did start discussions on that. I feel it's very important that we have all the planning commission members up to speed and understand what it means to be put into the growth area boundary prior to meeting with the Huff's. We certainly will request a meeting, Chairman Schultz will request a meeting at the appropriate time. We want to make sure we have all our ducks in a row. It's not, it's not just a, like, a no-big-deal thing to put them in the growth area boundary. Putting property in the growth area boundary means that you are going to, at some point, annex that property in for development, okay? So it's just not, eh, we'll put it there and, you know, that means, once it's there, that means that the idea was that you are going to annex it in some, at some point for development. We're talking about 170-acre parcel of land up off of Hawks Hill that touches the current boundary in the town. So it's certainly eligible to be brought in because of that, but there's a lot of things that the planning commission needs to look at, fully understand the long-term ramifications for the town, and that includes water and sewage and things like that.
Facility.
Yes, yes. So we started the process talking. As Michelle will tell you, it's a long, slow process, and it takes a lot of head thinking together to make the right decisions, so.
Okay, anything else on that? And lastly, Maryland 31 Water Main Project update. Mid-Atlantic remains on schedule at 4:15 and 4:17 Main Street. A combined sewer house connection was discovered. There's been two attempts to contact the owners. We need access to private property to separate the two sewer connections. It's been unsuccessful so far. I believe before Kim left for vacation last week, she sent the certified letters and regular mail letters out again. So I'll follow up with her when she gets back. We received a proposed change order from Mid-Atlantic for $29,428 and additional six days to the contract to do the work. Again, we need the owner's permission, because it's on private property. Mid-Atlantic Utilities noted parking restrictions will be required for upcoming work between Church Street and Main Street, which is the next phase they're gonna be moving into. So just giving you all a heads up about that. They also requested permission to work on Sunday, hopefully one Sunday.
Oh, my goodness.
When crossing, when doing the work, crossing Maryland 75, Green Valley Road at the intersection with Main Street. This is due to heavy tractor-trailer traffic and truck traffic during the weekdays and even Saturday. They observe very little truck traffic on Sundays. That work is estimated to take place late June, early August. I did make Mid-Atlantic aware of the weekend work hours between 9:00 and 9:00, it's not 7:00 on weekends, but, you know, Wayne and I are in favor of it, okay with it. It's better than, I believe it's better than doing night work, and, you know, less disruptive than having night work going on, but wanted to get it in front of you and think about it or get your okay for it. They're thinking it might be one day, or one Sunday, it might roll into two, but two probably worst case. If they try to do it during the week, it'll, it'll take 10 times to try to flag traffic through that intersection with the tractor-trailers trying to make the turn where they need to be.
Unless somebody has an objection, I'd say go ahead and do it.
I agree. Yeah, it's fine. Thanks.
Before you move off of Mid-Atlantic, if I may, since my house is in the midst of all the work that's been going on down there, I just, I just want to say that talking with my neighbors and the neighbors that have talked to me about it, just about everyone that I've talked to is very impressed with the crew doing the work. You know, we have a lot of homeowners that are inspectors as well, and are out there chatting to the guys and looking in the holes and doing the things.
Not accredited.
Not accredited. Not accredited. However, the workers are all very respectful to the residents, and I haven't heard any complaints at all. I think they're, you know, I can't tell you how many times I heard, that crew is a well-oiled machine. They are, they are really good, and clean up every day, it's like flawless, you know, so I'm quite impressed with them, and you can pass that along, Wayne, or whenever you talk to the guys.
I second that being.
Ever since, we had the Church Street Water Main break. I was up at Gary's actually on a Friday night, came down, and those guys were just unbelievable, and we've been working with them ever since. And, I mean, there was like three guys, and it was really almost like six guys working, that's just hell. There was no downtime, nothing, and you wouldn't know the supervisor from the guy that just started yesterday. I mean, that's, that company knows how to do things right. They work four-day week, so they got guys have three-day work weekends, which is a huge benefit to them. And like you said, they clean up everything, and they're very, very, always have been very respectful. Uh, and like you said, they clean up everything and they're very, very, always have been very responsive, you know?
Yeah, they're, they're, we're glad we got them.
Absolutely.
Uh, the only other thing we can, at the end, we'll just talk about the upcoming meetings, we, with the July fourth meeting specifically, so.
We talked about possibly not having that July third meeting.
We, we talked maybe deciding at this month's work session.
Just doing.
If we don't have anything coming up, just let everybody have a day early to start the weekend.
Be nice for the staff to all not have to work the night before the holiday.
So if they wanna go away for the fourth of July and take off on the third.
One suggestion we were gonna make is to maybe push it to, um, uh, the Tuesday before the second.
A lot of times we've just combined work session.
Yeah, we can just do a combined meeting.
Ian and I are both on vacation for the, the, um.
Work session?
The work session in July.
Okay.
So just something to consider, that's all. That's all.
If we see we have a need, you know, with everything going on, we may have to, but.
Okay.
The second would probably be better.
Play that by ear.
Yeah. Did, yeah, just, did you wanna?
No, that's just.
Question on the annexation, Michelle. Um, Blue Ridge was already in the town. Property, wasn't it or not? Cause it was one before that, it was in nineteen seventy-six with Apple Ridge.
I had nothing to do with Blue Ridge coming in. So it was in, I, I was here or at least somewhat here when the, the most recent phase of Blue Ridge was completed.
Right.
Um, or under, underway, but I was not before that, so that was a long time ago.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that was already in from many, many years ago.
It may have been, but I, I just don't know. And I apologize for being late, I know that I was supposed to help you talk through the, the, the issue of, um, the planning commission and the expansion. But, so we're not anywhere near the annexa- I'm gonna just stick my nose back in. Uh, we're not anywhere near the annexation particulars at this point.
Right.
But if a property is included, then it would be consistent to bring it in as an annexation. So the fact that they're asking to be included indicates that that's probably the direction that they're heading.
Right, Gary, Gary and Dave made it very clear that it's a long process.
Yeah.
But it's a process that needs to get started if.
If you're gonna start it.
Right. Alright, thank you, Gary. Alright, Community Deputy, oh, I'm sorry, Public Works Director, I did that last time, I think.
So Public Works has been really busy with the M D thirty-one, uh, project. Uh, everything's been going relatively smoothly. We've had to operate a lot of, a lot of valves and, and redirect flows and everything like that. But overall, um, we've only see, received a few complaints, uh, in doing that. Um, we've been very mindful of water quality and making sure we can flush hydrants out. And, and try to limit the impact of any hydraulic changes that we make within the system. So, uh, fortunately, I believe that, that's all been working out. Um, if you have an issue, like Councilwoman Schultz mentioned, please call Town Hall. That number after hours will go directly to my phone or Aaron's phone or Alan's phone. And we're more than happy to, uh, work through the issues and, and, and see where there might be problematic areas. Um, and feel free to, to call if there's a concern about running water or if something doesn't quite look right and, and we'll try to address it and let you know if that's normal or part of the project or if we have a water leak and, uh, we do appreciate the, the vigilance there. Public Works has also worked on, uh, finalizing several proposals for town projects, uh, that we anticipate would be funded with, uh, ARPA money. They include sewer lining, uh, additional water station painting, um, exterior, interior, uh, floors. And then lastly, we've started to work on RFP for, for paving, which would be highway user revenue money. Public Works met with a drilling contractor to pull our Dennings well pump. Unfortunately, Dennings will need a full rehab, which includes well redevelopment, piping, uh, plumbing, electrical work. We've been working with Carroll County Resource Management, uh, to find a cost-effective solution for a complex problem, to say the least. Um, we've noticed that the production of Dennings has declined over the last few years. Um, we have an idea of how to rehab that well to bring it back. But even in doing that, uh, the, the downfall of that particular site, it's before our mainspring location. They had the shared pipeline that was put in in nineteen oh seven. So it, it helps us in drought and it helps us if that line doesn't have an issue. Public Works has spent a great deal of time trying to find alternative water sources, working with consultants and trying to execute MOUs for drilling locations. Um, we are required to allocate supply per the state of Maryland responsibly and provide backup sources outside of our existing wells and springs. Sure, our wa- raw water line supply have issues. We need to have a backup place to avoid, a backup location to avoid water service interruption. Our Plan B of drilling at one thousand Green Valley Road has come to a halt. This property is currently owned by Carroll County Government but leased. Without this location, I recommend the town creating a capacity management plan. We should consider the following property, we should consider the following. Property acquisition for well drilling, drought restrictions, permit modification, which we're working on that now. We've had very positive feedback through the state of Maryland on that. So basically, they're gonna allow us to pull more water from, uh, somewhat restricted sites like our hillside wells. So if hillside could actually perform more, they're gonna allow us to pull more water from there, uh, in case the raw water line would go down. So that's, that's a crutch that we can lean on, but it's, it's not, it's not gonna solve our issue.
Real quick, Wayne, could we, could we possibly look into using ARPA funds to, um, talk about lining the, the main line out there instead of a full replacement?
So the, the issue, the issue that I found with lining the, the nineteen oh seven line, it's not per se the diameter of the line because it will actually shrink when you line it. It's the fact that we need fifteen hundred feet easements to do the lining, which means temporary easements within every fifteen hundred feet. That supply can only be down for two days. So we would have to line fifteen hundred feet, it would get cured, and we would have to reinstate it back into service, which is impossible because you need a bacteria sample and the bacteria sample takes twenty-four hours. So by then, we've used up our redundant capacity. So we have significant limitations for that, hence why we're trying to drill at other locations. And we, we have one last location that, that we're actively pursuing that's already in existence, and that's our Atlee well. But as part of our permit modification, um, we need to look at everything, have all our options and scenarios submitted to M D E at one time. That's one thousand Green Valley Road, that's other places we wanna drill. That's Atlee Ridge, that's everything combined, and we do one submit. So they look down upon, you know, several submittals and it's a, it's a really, um, tedious task to, to combine all this stuff and make everything work. There's also something called groundwater recharge, so, um, we only have so many acres for the recharge to go back into the watershed. So we have to consider that too. Um, we originally asked for a permit merger, which would merge hillside and mainspring and allow us to operationally control everything as one, uh, unified permit and, and that would gain, uh, give us the most flexibility for operations. But M D's came back to us and I think it's reasonable, um, what they're, you know, allowing us to potentially do. And we would have another permit, so we would have three permits, currently we have two. And then they're gonna increase the amount of money, uh, their amount of water that we can pump from a specific site. Um, so they're definitely working with us and they've done it at a really fast pace. So I was very impressed with, um, how reactive they were and understanding of our situation. But, but again, um, we rely on mainspring, it's sixty percent of our water and hillside is forty percent of our water. And so that's what we have right now. Operationally, mainspring is a good water supply. However, if we lose capacity in a drought, not to mention the deficiencies of the old pipeline, hillside as of now is operationally maxed out. And it's operationally maxed out and it's also maxed out under our permit situation now, which is gonna change. We're working hard on this. M D rules are very clear regarding capacity management plans and future water demand. And we will have to comply based on the submitted permit modification. This is a change, they're requiring a permit modifi- uh, capacity management plan. To be clear, we have options and we need cooperation and mutual understanding to make this work. Ultimately, it will affect everyone on the water system. One valid, one thousand Green Valley Road is the most cost-effective solution for everyone. A community challenge requires a community response. And that's what I have.
Couple questions for you. What's the big picture with, uh, Rups Meadow?
So Rups Meadow is weedy and it would require, um, ground surface water treatment, uh, rules, and that would be twenty-four hour monitoring, um, extensive filtration. And then with PFOS and the PFOS rules, that's probably more subject to PFOS than any other water, uh, system that we have currently. Uh, so it would be, be very restrictive and very costly to modify Rups and bring it up to today's standards. We are working with Lehigh now to get a new meter installed there for the monitoring requirements, uh, for the quarry. And, um, they've been very cooperative so far, um, but there is the risk that the quarry can influence Rups. And so.
But that, we have an agreement for that, so.
We do, so there's, there's an agreement in place, uh, that protects us and, um, basically they would replace that supply. There's also an agreement in place to use quarry water from the ethylene of the quarry. Um, and then the treatment process would be very similar to Rups. But again, that's a very costly, um, avenue to go down, so we're trying to look at.
The quarry would probably be more than sufficient to have, cover our needs for many years. Now, I know there's some pros and cons on the treatment and everything, but I was wondering whether or not there might be well sites on their property that they're not gonna mine, that might not be as costly to treat as what that other water well would be.
So we had, we had looked into well sites, uh, particularly at Meadow Lane, um, into the quarry property more. The associated risk with that is there's the zone of influence outside of the quarry. If we secure water rights on those wells or we drill wells on our property within the area, there's an assumed risk of, of sinkholes when we're extracting the water. That area is prone for sinkholes, uh, naturally because it's, it's, uh, geography. Um, there's not a whole lot of marble on, on this side of, of, of the quarry. And unfortunately, um, we would be responsible for any wells within fifteen hundred feet if there was a sinkhole or it would put the liability on us, basically. So we're looking at other places. We have another private property owner, um, who, who might be willing to let us drill. There's some other locations around town that are privately owned that where we haven't contacted the, the owners yet.
Five hundred? Five hundred.
Five hundred's a no-go, I tried that one.
Yeah.
Um, we couldn't, we couldn't reach a deal there, but we're gonna be right within that facility or vicinity. So there's a likelihood that we could capture that same hundred gallon per minute, uh, aquifer, um, that, that's at five hundred. So we're looking in, into everything, we're even looking as far as maybe drilling along the raw water line, but closer to town. So there's a shorter section to rehab and things like that, so. Um, Zach with Carroll County's done extensive work in mapping me out wells, all that are, that are viable options. Unfortunately, uh, within the annex limits of the town, there's very few favorable wells that are within bands of marble, which are the most secure and the least impactful. So one thousand Green Valley Road is really, uh, our best option. Out of all the RE Wright studies done in the eighties, that particular site had seven wells, uh, grouped within a certain area. And that's our best chance.
There might be another property I'll discuss later with you, uh, on Springdale, or I mean on one seventy-five, so. Um, and then, um, just skipped me there. Oh, I know this, we're going back in the seventies, I think, but there was a drought, I wanna say seventy-two, I can't remember exactly. And I'm sure, I know things have changed with M D E, but in that situation, we didn't have the water supply other than the mainspring. And, and there was a drought and they allowed the town to get water from the street and pipe it into the pipe. It would, is that even?
We let that permit expire in twenty sixteen, they wouldn't renew it.
Alright.
But, uh, there's, there's options, um.
And then there was another well off of Row, Row Road and Springdale.
Yeah, so, so, um, we're very fortunate to be able to work with, uh, Mike Hoffler with Hydroterra. He was originally part of the, the gang of five from RE Wright. He's familiar with all the old well sites and he was actively on the ground. Mike kept, uh, years of, of, of records, um, even when, uh, RE Wright dissolved. And we've been privileged to see those handwritten notes and things that he took years ago. The road, the, the well one Springdale on Row Road, uh, had a good, uh, full-blown yield, but it wasn't sustainable. Sustainability is one of the key, uh, parts of, of well drilling. Full-blown yields are just a basis, uh, to go off of, but then there's a ninety-six hour test that needs to be done. And the ninety-six hour test, uh, then determines the sustainability of a well. And so it's most favorable to be in marble and rather than any other geography. And that's why we're leaning towards drilling at locations with bands of marble, so.
Michelle, if, if I were a developer and I wanted to annex, this has nothing to do with Huff, but if I just wanted to increase my water consumption, where I had a business and wanted to expand, could it, does a town have the authority to say, okay, but you need to bring water in?
Does a town have the authority? It can. I don't believe at present, your code has anything specific about that.
But we could address that.
All those things can be addressed.
Okay.
One thing before we get off of this subject that's related, we requested and received a proposal from G M B to do a water and wastewater capacity study. Mentioned it before, and it's just along the lines of what we're talking about. I didn't wanna get it here tonight because we got a lot on the agenda, but I'll have it on the agenda for the work session.
Alright, very good. Thank you, Mr. Myers.
Yep.
Uh, Community Deputy, now we got you.
Is there a mic?
It should be seasoned by now.
Yeah.
Alright, well, since we're on the top floor, I hope everyone's driving safe tonight. And those that are inside their house, I wouldn't go out, we just got dumped on here at Town Hall. But it's much needed rain, so I hear we're already behind, that's what the experts say. Between May first and June fifth, two thousand twenty-four, the Carroll County Sheriff's Office responded to forty-eight calls for service within the town of New Windsor. Out of those calls, seven were found to be reportable. On five three, two thousand twenty-four, at nine twenty-five AM, a theft from a, theft of a roll-off dumpster was reported to the sheriff's office. The dumpster was stolen from the area of New Windsor Road and Co. Drive. This case is still open for further investigation. On five four, two thousand twenty-four, at twelve oh nine AM, a domestic was reported in the three hundred block of Main Street. The suspect was arrested for first and second degree assault in relation to the domestic. And the suspect was additionally found to have a favor, to appear benchwarrant, case is closed by arrest. Say that ten times fast. Say that ten times fast. On five, five twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four, at eight fifty-four P M, an assault was reported at the New Windsor Carnival grounds uh, during Carnival hours. Patrons of the Carnival advised that they felt stinging on their arms and observed a large group of juveniles dispersed. Several juveniles were identified and interviewed. Uh, it was discovered that the suspect was firing an Orbeez gel ball blaster gun into the crowd, um, which is like an air assault gun. Uh, that case is open for further investigation. On six four twenty-four, at seven fifty-eight P M, a domestic was reported in the four hundred block of High Street. Both parties were interviewed and no injuries were observed. Both parties were referred to the District Court Commissioner's Office for further charges. And vehicle collisions. I love how I got that in like quotations here. So, we had three for this past month. On five three, two thousand twenty-four, at five twenty-three A M, a vehicle collision was reported in the twelve hundred block of New Windsor Road. The vehicle struck a power pole, resulting in disabling damage. The occupant refused medical treatment. On five eight twenty-four, at one sixteen P M, a vehicle collision was reported in the three hundred block of Main Street. A county vehicle struck a mirror to the vehicle parked on the shoulder of the roadway, resulting in minor damage to the vehicle, and an information exchange was completed. Um, and then on five twenty-four, at eight thirty-one P M, a vehicle collision was reported in the twenty-eight hundred block of New Windsor Road. Uh, preliminary investigation revealed that a minivan was making a left-hand turn onto Church Street while a motorcycle with two occupants was traveling at a constant speed the opposite direction. As the van attempted to complete the turn in front of the motorcycle, they ultimately collided. Uh, two occupants of the motorcycle were flown to the University of Maryland Shop Trauma Center for further care. Um, additional notes, National Night Out registration is still open for organizations who wish to attend. Uh, you can contact me at K McGinnis at CarrollCountyMD.gov. Crisis helpline is still four one oh, nine five two, nine five five two. The Carroll County Mobile Crisis Team is open, open seven days a week, nine A M. to twelve A M. Nine eight eight, dial nine eight eight if you need immediate emotional support. Simply dial nine eight eight, and you will be in touch with a counselor that can help. And that, I think, concludes my report.
I want to thank you for your presence at the carnival and then also handling that incident.
Thanks, sir.
Lifted in the bud. Thank you.
Thank you.
West Carroll Rec Council.
I'll hold it. I'm just passing around.
Terry Puck, West Carroll Rec. Um, looks like the primary election caused by surprise. We didn't have a meeting, we didn't have a building. I don't know how that happens. We're wrapping up the spring season. A lot of, a lot of programs run right into the summer season, baseball, lacrosse, so forth. But I do want to shout out to the youth soccer program. Over four hundred kids signed up. It's like four hundred and thirty-six, I think. Huge number. Almost as much as basketball. Basketball and soccer really pull their weight. Um, our boys and girls are running high school teams, both won state titles. Um, boys are done for the fall, or for the spring. Girls were heading up to New Jersey this weekend. We're playing a tournament for the league. We're in, goes from Connecticut to South Carolina, and these are heavy, heavy hitting teams, naturally ranked teams. So, hopefully we can go up there and bring it home. We have a team that can do it. Um, we did run a home kickstand this year at carnival, down from last year. I think that was what we're hearing across the board. Um, still be good, but not as not as well we did last year. And the last thing we did, uh, sent out three scholarships to graduating seniors, two from F S K, one from South Carroll, five hundred dollars each. Kids absolutely kill it. Their resumes are impressive for high school seniors, so really that's about it for this one. Um, hopefully they have good news next time coming back from New Jersey.
Well, it's all good news of so far, so.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. How are we doing on volunteers? Still need?
Oh, we just, we don't need volunteers. Um, but it seems like the county's getting tougher and tougher on the volunteer process. What they're asking us to do is sometimes it's just too much. We, we don't have enough people to do this. They want us to patrol the areas, check out, make sure everything is safe. You know, we gotta patrol people, bring dogs to the park, and make sure they're on a leash, and it's, we can't coach and do all this other stuff, and we don't have enough people to volunteer, so. Because since this is the last meeting at the rec council was, we're going to move people. We're going to have less and less volunteers, and I don't know why it's trending that way. They're just asking a lot more out of volunteers. We're not paid. You know, we're volunteering our time to help these kids, and he's a whiz. To me, it's getting a little much.
Understand.
Yeah.
But I think that's, that's wherever you go anymore. You had a question, Jeff?
Sure. Just a little earlier than uh, when you got here, uh, we talked about the funnel cake stand for the music on the main.
Yes.
Um, if you're, if you could pass that back to the, or give us a yes today, that'd be wonderful. How's that? How's that for putting, being put on the spot?
Go ahead and say it. Just say Kevin's chair.
Right.
So, the people, the clubs that do it at the carnival, we make pretty good money out of it.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I don't know why not. I think last year, the funnel cake stand was immediately canceled.
Right.
And we just didn't even have it. Um, but the pair could have done. I don't see why not.
I shot Stephanie a, a text, so...
And I'll ask you.
Okay.
I, I think we may have. It's just a one-day thing.
Sure.
So, I don't know why not.
Awesome. That's all we can ask.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
No. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
Fire chief, Chief Crimer's not able to be here tonight, um, but I would imagine he would uh, thank everybody that came out to support uh, Fire Department for the, at the carnival. Anyone that helped, that he would be greatly appreciated. It was a busy week and a half when they had the um, big money bonanza with Horny Fire Department on Saturday, and then come right around and set up for the carnival uh, and ready to go by Tuesday. So, it was a busy week for everybody. So, um, they, they are in the process of buying and, looking at buying a new engine. Um, the last one, I think, was five fifty, and we're looking, I think, at like nine hundred to a million dollars in a brush truck, depending on whether they get a new one or refurbished one, it might be three hundred and fifty thousand. So, these fundraisers are extremely important. Uh, they are, the, the purchase of the equipment is still dependent upon the fire department's throwing fundraisers, so. Uh, treasure?
Alright. On five fourteen of two thousand and twenty-four, we had a check intercepted in the mail. It was just under twenty thousand dollars. Um, however, positive pay with A C N B that we set up last time worked exactly like it's supposed to. Um, there was no loss to the town. Um, first thing in the morning, I get a notification that what I put into the bank does not match what the check actually cashed for. I checked it out. They changed the name. I declined it. We did not lose any money. No police report did not have to be... Uh, no police report had to be um, filed. Um, so we've did everything on our end that is correct. A C N B ran just like it was supposed to. Um, so yeah, I can't, I can't change the mail.
No.
No. Um, we hand checks directly to the postal service, so we don't drop in the mailbox anymore. So, it was somewhere going there. Um, other than that, that's all I got.
Alright. Thank you. Water and sewer billing clerk, anything?
Yeah, I got a, I'll read Kim's report. She says hello from sunny Siesta Key, Florida, so she was hoping for good weather when she wrote this. So, I had to write, I had to say that.
Great question.
Um, submission for newsletter content is due no later than June fourteenth. To give enough time to proof, print, and mail, newsletters will be in homes no later than Friday, June twenty-eighth. If you prefer electronic copy, please email uh, thetown@info@new windsor M D dot org. Uh, second quarter water bills will be mailed after the July fourth holiday weekend, no later than Friday, July twelfth. Again, if you prefer electronic copy, please send an email. Uh, reminder, the town does not take payment for water bills over the phone. The town offers four ways only to pay your water bill. Cash or check in the, in office, cash or check after hours in a lockbox, electronically through the town's website, and electronically through your bank account. For Maryland thirty-one Water Main Improvement Project updates, including service interruptions, instructions, please see our website and our Facebook page. They're updated weekly, daily, when necessary. And the only thing I'll add to her first item about the newsletter is, as we do each year, the uh, the C C R Consumer Conference Report from M E S uh, is required to go out to all the residents, and that's how we, we address that. And so, we'll be getting that out. The date coincides with when we mail that, that summer letter. So, that's it.
Thank you. New business? Sewer lining recommendations to award contract?
Okay, so Public Works, in coordination with Town Manager Di, has been pretty busy on a few projects lately, uh, trying to allocate ARPA funds, and um, this was one of the projects that we had talked about would be a good use of those funds. Um, so we reached out to three vendors, Victory Trenchless, um, Mister Rehab, and Pleasance Construction. Um, the only difference in the three vendors was with Mister Rehab, and it was how they um, cure the, the liner, um, and they use steam. Everyone else has pretty much switched to U V. Um, the prices were, were very competitive. Um, we're not seeing large gaps in between competitive, competitors pricing like, like we were uh, during COVID and things like that. Um, so I'll read the bid tab here. Um, Victory Trench, Trenchless was two hundred and ten thousand, eight sixty. Mister Rehab uh, was two hundred and one, seven seventy-nine, and Pleasance Construction was two hundred and ten thousand, seven sixty-two, ninety-one. Um, we plan on lining a total of uh, four thousand thirty feet. Um, it includes sections on Church Street, Hillside Avenue, and Lampard Avenue. Um, we determine those particular sections based on an increased flow demand during rain events at our co-pump station, um, and they all did it directly, those roads and these particular manholes that we selected, uh, drain right to co. Um, so Steam Cure uh, is an, is an older but effective method um, that, that folks still use. Um, some of the advantages of the Steam Cure liner is they're generally faster um, than hot water, um, and you can save time uh, and do larger sections as opposed to U V. Um, some of the disadvantages are they blister uh, during the curing process, which uh, leaves imperfections and vulnerabilities potentially. Uh, there's a strong smell associated with a Steam Cure liner, and then because of the blistering risk, there's potentially a quality control risk. Um, with U V lining, um, it's more modern, um, there's less of a smell, uh, there's more quality control. Um, it's more or less computer monitored, uh, temperature, pressure, cure rate, everything like that's monitored electronically. Uh, the strength and the durability's a lot, a lot better. Um, the length that you're able to do at one time is about three hundred and twenty-eight feet. The largest section we have, I believe, was around four hundred feet. Um, so, so that's good there. Um, and typically, there's a significant uh, cost difference. Uh, we're very fortunate with the prices the way they are. Um, they're right in line with where we originally budgeted uh, the sewer lining project when we were going to use um, our renewed reserve replace funds. So, um, I think we did that probably a year ago when we projected that at least. So, we're very happy with the numbers and seeing the prices come down on some of this stuff. Um, so, after review of all the proposals, uh, we definitely like the, the U V uh, process better. Um, again, the numbers are really close, but going off of the uh, years of experience, um, we're, we're recommending the award to Pleasance Construction. Uh, they're very familiar with the Carroll County area. They're out of Clarksburg, Maryland, um, and we like their curing method. Um, and they're very close to Victory Trench, Trenchless, but they've, they've only been in business for, for two years. Uh, Pleasance has been doing U V for three years, and they've, they've been in business for thirty. So, we like that security there, knowing that those folks have been in this industry for years. Um, so again, we, we're, we're recommending making a motion to, to approve Pleasance at two ten, seven sixty-two, ninety-one, uh, using ARPA money for the, for the sewer lining project.
Was the company that did the work before responsive?
AM, was that AM Liner, AM Liner? Who did the Main Street, right?
So, we used U S G I, um, and they actually dissolved, and that's where Victory Trenchless came, came from.
Okay.
Uh, it's a, like a partner company.
Alright.
Wayne, what in your spreadsheet there, you have seats, C C T V cost per foot?
Yeah, so, so as part of the project, we want to get everything cameraed so we can see if there's any deficiencies uh, before lining, um, and any corrective actions that need to be taken care of. Um, so those, those costs varied, as did the mobilization cost, but the end numbers are really close.
So, that's just the cost that they were charging to C C T V the lines?
Correct.
Gotcha.
Included in the total cost.
Correct.
Yeah, everything's included. That, that's the final number.
Gotcha.
I apologize for that.
So, they're both around, or they're all right around, but we, fifty-two dollars a foot, give or take fifty-one dollars a foot total?
And we have enough ARPA for all of that.
It really is.
I'll make the motion to award Pleasance contract, um, two hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two, ninety-one cents using ARPA funds.
We have a motion, I hear, a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the contract for lining sewer lines to Pleasance Con- Construction in the amount of two hundred and ten thousand, seven sixty-two, ninety-one from ARPA funds. Any questions or comments? Do, when, when can they start, where?
Uh, four to six weeks after uh, receipt of, of bid award.
So, that'll be, it'll be done before?
We, we award the bid, then that's a, a contract that should set, will satisfy the ARPA requirement to...
Have any impact on the, the Main Street project as well, when they're crossing Church?
No, I mean, um, they're, 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 they'll be on this side of things, and, and the timing is perfect.
Good. Alright. All those in favor, say in front of me, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So carry.
Carry.
Big step for the I and I.
Spending the money.
Water facilities painting recommendations to award contract?
Okay, so this is another potential ARPA-funded project. Um, as we all know, um, you, we, I, I, Gary and I approached the council uh, about painting the interior piping of the booster station and hillside wells. Um, once, once we rehab the boost stations, um, in an effort to uh, to protect our investment, um, I'm requesting uh, interior and exterior painting of all the water facility buildings, including uh, uh, epoxy, painting the floors, and um, making necessary caulking and mortar repairs. Um, unfortunately, on this one, we reached out to the same vendors that did the painting on the pipes, and we only received one bid. Um, Frederick Painting uh, said that, that they weren't going to bid uh, kind of towards the end before the, the due date for the R F P. Um, Barrett Codings, they're the ones that bid at twenty-eight, six thirty-five for all the mentioned work. Um, and, and they performed a site inspection, and they were actually the only ones to schedule a site inspection with us, and then ease... And then ease of painting, we weren't able to get ahold of those folks at all, unfortunately. So at Hillside Wells, we anticipate painting of the walls, ceilings, door trims, using commercial-grade paint, prepping and painting the floors using high-performance epoxy coating. And at the Main Spring site, the same thing. And that'll basically rehab those stations from the ground up at that point in time. As Councilman Huffman mentioned, at our Main Spring station, we've already installed new gutter and soffit to protect our building. The wood was getting in bad shape, and we needed better ventilation there. So that part of the project's done. So I recommend awarding the bid to Barrett Coatings for 28,635, and that's for hillside and Main Spring painting using ARPA funds.
Any questions or comments before we ask for a motion? Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the painting project to Barrett Coatings for 28,635 using ARPA funds. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, say in favor, and saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So carry.
Thank you.
Review and discussions of draft employee handbook updates and changes.
Okay. Try to make this as quick as possible, but it's very important. As previously mentioned, the staff has been working on revisions to the employee handbook. There were minor changes made in December of '22. Staff has performed a thorough top-to-bottom review and provided a draft version for council, mayor and council review. Draft handbook was sent to the mayor and council with the draft agenda for tonight's meeting, and it's also available in tonight's folder. Review of the handbook will take some time, but for starters, we are requesting to, that we start with the maternity, paternity leave because we have a staff member who will very soon be affected by this. This is Section 12 on Page 12. Can you pull that up, Will?
Yeah.
Will, I don't have it there.
Yeah, the TV's not working today. Do have it for online people.
Okay. So there are, when you get, if you look at the version in the folder, any changes or additions that we made to the handbook are highlighted in yellow. So Dana, do you want to elaborate on that since you pretty much put that together? Or you?
I don't have a firm answer to that. It basically gives, the maternity leave that we had before was very, very basic. It basically gives any new mother two weeks paid time off, and any new father, one week paid time off to help mom with the baby. We Family Leave Act, we have to hold the job for 12 weeks, which is standard, again. New mothers will be able to take the short-term disability that we have set up already. New fathers will not be able to. And I'm not the employee that needs this.
Say, you keep it a secret.
Dear Wayne either.
If it was mine, I would say 12 weeks paid.
And we can go down the line, Wayne?
Go even farther.
Don't even come this way. Full-time employees.
Full-time employees, been here for a year. Again, it's just a revamp of what we didn't have.
So what do you need, I mean, are you going to have us approve sections at a time? Or what are you thinking here?
We, like I said, this is going to take some time to handle the whole thing.
Michelle's reviewed it. We also do have the HR manager or consultant coming in in July, which is, this is a big chunk of her main responsibility. However, because we do have an employee that is on the cusp, and he's a great working employee, has been with the town for just about a year, we would like a little bit of special, just to do this section.
It goes along with our family-friendly policy.
It does.
You just need us to, Michelle, what are we supposed to be doing here?
Do you need to make a motion?
Yeah. Do I just update that section for now? Yeah, I think that would be the prudent thing to do. And that way, it's on the record, you have a motion to approve the new Section 12 maternity, paternity leave. And once, assuming that that is adopted, then that can be in play before we have to finalize the entire review. Or I make a motion that we?
Wait, 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 don't make a motion yet, please. Any spouse who has been employed with the town for over a year and is currently full-time wishing to take paternity leave will be allowed one week, five days paid leave, and will not be required to use sick vacation time during this period.
It's a special pop.
What's that?
It's a special pot of leave.
Yeah, but.
We could add men leave.
Yeah, I'm thinking the same, 10 days, two weeks, 10 days. You figure three days are hospital.
For a mom, absolutely.
You know, two days to help mom out. You know, I would say that.
Do you want to make it?
Will be allowed, will be allowed up to 10 days.
For the dad.
For the spouse, yes.
Any spouse who has been employed with the town for over a year and is currently full-time wishing to take paternity leave will be allowed up to.
Well, you could almost put it in there as one. Any employee.
With a new child.
With a new child or adopted child. I mean, you wouldn't need to separate the spouse versus employee. I mean, it would be the employee, period.
It would be the employee, yeah.
Instead of separating maternal, paternal.
Yeah, you can make it all once.
Yeah.
They're going to be the same, there's no reason to separate them.
Combine them into the second, eliminate the third.
Any new mother slash father.
Well, you could just say any new parent.
Say parent.
Any new parent.
Who's an employee.
Who's expecting a child will be given two weeks, 10 days paid leave. All new mothers are allowed to follow short-term disability, as long as they follow the procedure stated in Section 7.
Except when, that sentence there.
Yeah.
Any new parent who is expecting a child will be given two weeks. Where are they taking that two weeks? Anytime they want?
Yeah, expecting is the problem in that sense.
Yeah. It would be at the birth, at the.
Any new parent.
Here's what I would suggest. If we get a conceptual agreement on 10 days for mom or dad upon the birth of the child. Or adoption. Or adoption of the child. And then we rewrite it.
Figure out the.
So that it suits, as opposed to trying to rewrite something.
Right now.
While we're all sitting here and seven people talking.
Right. And Gary, Gary would have the flexibility. Let's say mom went into labor today, he takes off today, but the baby's not born until tomorrow. That first day would be counted, you know, it didn't have to wait till the birth of.
I'm sure we can.
Yeah.
We can figure it out.
Get written in there. I just think Gary can approve up to 10 days, you know. Maybe he'll want, maybe that person would want one week, you know. I don't think it has to be 10 days executive, consecutively, that, you know, maybe.
Within the first year.
Mom's coming in from California to take care of the second week, and he's going to come back to work, and then he'll take care of the third week, so, you know.
So let's take some time to rewrite it.
Yeah.
But the concern, I think, is, I get the sense that this is fairly an imminent blessed event, so.
Like almost, yeah, he's got.
Until we get it written, I would entertain a motion that the employee is given 10 days leave with the birth of a child or adoption, and Gary has, right now, the flexibility until it's written in stone to approve the 10 days. Somebody want to make that motion? Okay, you just made, you want to repeat?
What he said.
Is everybody all right with that?
I lost it.
I just think it's fair that 10 days be for mother or father.
No, that's great. I agree.
So do I hear a second?
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve 10 days for a new parent. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, say in favor, and saying aye.
Aye.
So carry.
Okay, Wayne, get going.
One more quick thing before we move on from that. And as you guys look through the handbook, one of the biggest, just something to think about, one of the biggest proposed changes in the draft is in Section 8, paid time off, leave of absence. We've added verbiage for part-time employees. And as for full-time employees, we're not proposing changes to amounts of leave time earned, but propose changes of amounts of leave time carryover. There's basically four options to consider, and also a proposed change upon leaving service with the. So just, that's probably the single biggest change to the policy. There's other, there's other changes too, but just something to think about and look at for, as we move on and review things.
So can we talk about that a little bit? So I see that we're, you know, one of the options is allowing the employees to carry over, say, up to 10 days. My question, and not being opposed to something like that, is we ran into a situation not long ago when a employee retired, and they had accumulated maybe more leave at the time than, okay. My question here is, if an employee, say, had their 15 days of vacation a year, or maybe 20 days of vacation a year, and they had carried over 10 days from the previous year, they could have maybe 35 days of leave on the books, 280 hours of leave on the books, and they retire with all that leave. At, say, 50 bucks an hour, maybe, that's $14,000 that the town would have to pay out for their retirement. I didn't find any other retirement payout stuff in here, so I'm assuming this is the section where that would happen. My question to that would be, where does the town have the $14,000, or if it was only 25 days, 200 hours, $10,000 sitting that we would be able to pay that employee out? The last time this happened, we happened to have about $75,000 or $76,000 because we had squirreled away some money. We were thinking about hiring somebody, or someone left, so we had some money in that line item that we were able to make that good. But in the future, how does the town pay out someone's leave if they retire on us like that?
I think that's part of the issue that y'all are going to have to determine now, is if you want to do it that way, if you want to do it a different way, I think that's one of the four options. This would be a question for, not for tonight, but is there a way to restrict? Sure, you carried it over, but if you decide to leave three days into the year, and you've got 20 days a year, we're not, you know, we're not paying you for something like that, you know? But you got to walk through what it is you want to do. Exactly.
All right.
Well, redig.
And what it is you want to do, obviously, is driven in no small part by how much that costs, like all things in life. So is our homework to look at this and be prepared to discuss it at the work session? Is that what you're thinking?
Yep.
Okay. To discuss, compare, and contrast.
Any other parts, Gary?
Those are the main ones. Just take a look at things, but that'll probably generate the most amount of conversation and thought, I believe.
Okay. Sort of like this one coming up.
Water sewer connection charges for non-residential.
All right. In the essence of time, you got more homework. So water sewer connection charges for non-residential. As many of you may know, Springdale Prep School applied for a building permit for renovations and change of use to Windsor Hall at the 500 Main Street campus back on October 23rd of last year. There's a lot of back-and-forth discussions, meetings, et cetera, on this, and we're getting closer to approving approval of the building permit. Connection charges, base and usage rates need to be determined for non-residential uses. The town's current water and sewer rate schedule covers base and usage rates and connection fees through fiscal year '23. All rates and fees were frozen for fiscal year '24 and '25. Water and sewer connection fees in the schedule are for residential use. The town has not had a building permit for a non-residential building of this magnitude in a long time. I reached out to five of the county municipalities to see what they, how they handle this. Hempstead, Manchester, Tony Town, Mount Airy, and Union Bridge. I've heard back from all of them, and you can take a look at this very detailed and lengthy spreadsheet. Again, we won't do it all right now. This is not likely going to be a decision made tonight. It's a lot of information. But I'll try to summarize. In general, the consensus with the different municipalities is it all revolves, MDE states that one EDU is 250 gallons per day, okay? All the other municipalities use some form of calculation based off of EDU count. So, and Tony Town and Mount Airy are very similar. I like the way they do things. I like the way they do it. Basically, you take, you would take the proposed gallon-per-day usage needed for this built, for a building, and then you would divide it out by 250 to determine your EDU count. So that's, in general, that's how a lot of these are done in some form or fashion. Not knocking on the county, when I was there, and we have their list, I didn't fully understand or agree with how that's determined. They use the same basis, one EDU, 250 gallons as a start for the, and then it equates to a small, the smallest residential meter, and then they use a series of multipliers that comes from WSSC. As the meter size increases, it's multiplied to the gallon-per-day base of 250 and the base connection fee, and it generates a series of gallons per day and connection fees. The thing is, is if you take a, like a two-inch meter, for instance, in the calculation, and you look at their fees, it would be, it's equivalent of 725 gallons based on multiplier, and their fee would be 28,342, but it only equates to 2.9 EDUs. I don't think that the gallon numbers that they're using aren't equal to or accurate to what the various meters will flow. A two-inch meter will flow a lot more than 725 gallons, just as an eight-inch meter's going to flow an ungodly amount of water, and it's calculated at 7,250. So I don't, I never really grasped that or agreed with that tier. That's how they do it. I threw it in there. It's very detailed, but it's a mathematical multiplier going on there. So I provided three options, and that's on, there's two other smaller spreadsheets. And basically, on the first one, where it has non-residential connection fees, I give the, what our current or existing fees are, and some information on those, and then some things to consider. And the three, and then I give basically three options to think about, and that's based on my experience and then information gathered from the other municipalities. Keep in mind that each of those options will cover basically three scenarios that could come up with a non-residential building. So you'd have a renovation of an existing building that's not requiring any additional water or sewer demand. You have a renovation of existing building that will require additional water and sewer demand. And then you'd have a new building that's going to obviously require, from ground up, is going to require everything, water and sewer requirements. So some things to consider, establish and adopt a new rate schedule to include base usage rates and connection fees for non-residential. You can, we can consider some terminology. There's three or four different terms that are out there for these fees. Connection fees, area connection fees, tap fees, impact fees. It's all basically the same thing, and if you prefer one over the other, Wayne and I kind of like impact fees, because it's fees covering the impacts to connecting to the because it's, it's, it's fees covering the impacts to connecting to the water and sewer system. Consider the three scenarios in my report. Non-residential buildings use the most water and sewer and should pay higher base and usage rates and connection fees. You could, you could go, you could use a tiered system for usage and/or base rates. County, for instance, in their usage rates, they have a tiered system. Couple other municipalities, 'cause I put together a similar spreadsheet just for base and usage rates. Some of them use a tiered system, some of them don't. Use, use, I, I think the best way to start, in, in our opinion, is to use the residential connection fees as a base. And then additional fees based on the EDUs. I like, I like that, that concept there. I think that's a solid reasoning for that. And allocation, or allowance of existing water and sewer use or allocations for existing buildings with, that are proposing renovations. So for instance, you have a building that's in, it's already, it's existing. It already was using water, it is using water to a certain extent. There's an allocation associated with the water and sewer. In that situation, do you consider giving them an allowance for what they were using and then take what they're proposing and, and determine the EDU count on the difference? You know, it's, it's, you know, they're already in the system, they're already in there. They've either paid impact fees or, or connection fees at one time, or they didn't exist when they built the building. Who knows, you know? EDUs are, again, are based on two-hundred-and-fifty gallons per day per EDU and that's an MDE regulation. And then you calculate it by proposed water use, as I mentioned, divide by two-hundred-and-fifty gallons per day. So I, again, I ran, I didn't wanna get, there's any number of scenarios or, or options you can go with, but I'd like to, to kinda focus and drill it down as, as best we can. If there's a variation or something you all wanna introduce or, or request, we can do that as well. So under the first option, calculate, the fees would be calculated as follows. The residential fee as the base, you would either inflate it or not, 'cause in our current rate schedule, freeze, the, the rates, or the connection fees were inflated at a three percent increment. So we could either leave them where they are, we can inflate them or not. Calculate EDUs based on, on proposed use divided by two-fifty with or, with no allowance for existing allocation. You start with your base water and sewer rate fees and then use the full water and sewer connection fees times the EDU. So for instance, if you go like to the second, the second thing there, there was, I ran some fees based, just as an example of how to calculate it, you know, it would, you would take, let's say you had a, a, a building that needed thirty-four-hundred gallons per day and you divided that by two-fifty, that equates to thirteen-point-six EDUs. So I would say you start, and I'm just using what our current water base rate is of nine, nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty-five dollars. You start there, then you take, in the option one, you take that same number times the thirteen-point-six EDUs and then add them together. And then, you know, that's the highest, that's gonna be the highest cost or, to, to develop. The same thing kinda on the sewers. The sewer just differs based on, the sewer rate, connection fee, I'm sorry, is a little less. It's eight-thousand-eighty-one currently. Then for, for option two, same, same thing. The difference is you could use, you could use five thousand, which is approximately half of, for water, approximately half of what the current water connection fee is, times the number of EDUs. And then for sewer, four thousand, which is approximately half of the cost, to reduce that sum. And then the third, the third option is same thing, is drop it, you know, use a quarter. Use twenty-five-hundred additional per EDU, which is a quarter of the existing water connection and, for water, and two thousand per EDU, additional EDU, which is a quarter of the existing sewer connection fee. And then that second page runs through those calculations, just using a thirty-four-hundred dollar, or thirty-four-hundred gallon per day requested need. But that's a lot of information, sorry.
But you're not looking for a decision tonight?
No, I don't, I mean, unless you guys miraculously have one of these that you really like and we can vote on it, but. We need to make a decision sooner than later, but.
This isn't the only reason for delay.
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions right now? I can answer to help you think along the way. We're more than happy to do that. Not, we'll hammer it out at the work session.
All right.
Thanks for all that, Gary. I know that was a lot of work.
It was.
Can you send me that?
All right.
Great updates. Mentioned that in my report, so there's not a whole lot. However, another item for discussion for the work session. The two-eleven building, I think we had talked about. I think it was almost consensus at one time to keep the facade and tear the building down. Wayne, you remember what the estimated cost of demo, demo that?
Forty to sixty thousand, I believe.
So we use a figure of fifty, just ballpark, and we would gain the three parking spaces, three or four.
Yeah, the parking spaces are about eighteen by eight, something like that now, so probably three.
So we wouldn't gain too many for fifty thousand dollars, is my bottom line here. The, and Wayne, you can update us on the need for upgrading the water and sewer lines, 'cause that was not included in the Main Street project, correct?
Yeah, so one connection was included, one connection was not. So the only cost associated with that would be adding the additional connection. In regards to the sewer line, the sewer line would be public up until a point and we would just install a public cleanout and then that would be it, which is relatively easy. Not that expensive and we would probably do it in this rear parking lot down here. And no easements needed, 'cause it's public and the town owns this building, so.
But on that, that connection goes, sewer connection goes out the back, right, the building? And between Sugar's building and the next building?
Yes.
Over to Church Street.
We have no easement on that.
Correct, but that would be between Sugar's and getting a recorded easement from Sugar's and then the other property owner. And then if we went down that avenue, we would up, upgrade that particular main to six inch, probably. It's a complicated situation, honestly. It's called a shared connection. Not uncommon in older infrastructure. We're dealing with it at four-fifteen, four-seventeen main. It would, it would probably accommodate the flows that we have now and maybe the projected flows at two-fifty per day times two. So we can look at that outside of the project.
Well, I would, would like to either consider that for part of the grant and perhaps maybe the town, whether or not the council has agreement to fund that, so that, that would be a bigger percentage of financial involvement for the grant. Or we just keep it outside the project to keep the price of the grant lower. But if you can get all of the scope and estimated cost for our work session, we greatly appreciate that.
So the, the water, the water line is the easy part. The sewer line is gonna be a little bit more difficult. I could probably turn around installation of a cleanout relatively fast, but in regards to the easements and the upgrading of the sewer line, we could give a base number.
Does that have to be done? And the reason is, we have three employees here during the day using the system and we're looking at possibly having four people. So I'm not seeing a huge increase in the usage.
What size is that line, do you know?
Four inch. So, so four inch, a shared connection typically is at least six in most cases. This particular connection is four inch. It served the existing capacity demand very well. One of the things that, that I was gonna do is take our push cam and do a video of the, the lateral and where it goes into the main and everything like that. And then offer that footage to Justin from Mintland Utilities and try to get a quote on a six inch if needed. And so a lot of variables there.
Would it be needed for, like, per code? Because it's gonna be a, like a residential multi-tenant?
Well, you have two public connections right now. You have the one coming out of there because we own the building and then the public connection that goes to the main itself. So that's a gray area, just, to simplify it.
So the sewer discharges from that building and then sewer discharges from this building and then in the back, in that concrete pad, they merge together and go between Sugar's rental unit and the adjoining property.
Correct.
Out to, to church.
So this goes straight back to the back of the building?
Yep, and then it makes a left and then goes back a little alleyway between the two homes.
One of the tough things to do with upgrading that line is, is, is access. There's, there's, there's no room to get equipment.
You go under the building?
It parallels two buildings.
Wouldn't, because sewer wouldn't, because that was put in sixty-four after the building, yeah.
Yeah, it's just tight to get any kind of.
So we need to do, we need to do easement research and just see. We probably, we probably would have an easement on that. I'm certain of it.
But the due date on both these grants are the twenty-sixth of June. So we've gotta make some decisions by our work session.
Haven't educated yet.
Would they consider that part of the scope of work of the project, though?
Yes.
So what we'll do is we'll get a budget number, we'll put it in there and then we'll make a determination at a later date to simplify things. 'Cause we don't have to spend the entire amount in the grant.
But we, we'll discuss all that. I'll have more information. They're, they're, they're looking at gutting both floors and starting from scratch, basically. Ceiling, floor, walls, everything. And they'll have all new walls, of course, and ceiling and tiles. And then we'll have individual bathrooms, individual kitchenette and two bedrooms and a living room plus a utility closet, I guess. And we'll have HVAC system and also sprinkler system on each floor. And it's, we're looking, probably if we include thirty thousand for the infrastructure and the water and sewer, we're looking at approximately four-hundred-and-fifty thousand. That's a rough estimate. That's not out to bid. I think we'll, we'll get some lower prices once, we've only gotten an estimate from one company, just to get the grant written, so.
Well, I would say at the, at the very least, we should put a public cleanout in, at the very least.
But infrastructure, I'm pretty sure is included in that.
Okay.
So I'll have more information on that. And like I said before, Lewis Contractors is getting us a scope of work and estimated cost from, or from them for the grant and they know the deadline as well. So Mike, Mike has already started putting some information in. I mean, the justification he has probably from the foundation stabilization. So probably won't really just populate the, the numbers in there and the scope of work and he'll probably have everything else done.
Okay.
And then the Vietnam Memorial traveling wall, can you put that up? Do you have that?
I got it for the people at home, but not here.
In case you're not aware, Babylon Vault is bringing a three-fifth scale of the Vietnam Memorial. In Washington, stands six feet tall at the center and covers almost three-hundred feet from end to end. This will be at the New Windsor Carnival grounds. It will bear the names of over fifty-eight thousand men and women. The wall stands as a reminder of the ultimate sacrifices made during the Vietnam War. Bringing the wall that heals to the county allows our community to, allows our community the opportunity to visit in our hometown who otherwise may not be able to make the trip to Washington DC. As I said at the, earlier, at the musical in the main, we are looking to change the date. And that's in, this is October ninth through the thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. It's a year and a half, basically, away. So this, I, I, I feel will be a huge, no, it will be a huge event for the town of New Windsor. So be thinking about what we can do to enhance this project. You know, I, I can see tens of thousands of people coming to New Windsor. So there's people, maybe veterans from Vietnam that don't wanna go to DC because maybe they have some bad political views from that time.
It's not the most user-friendly city to just stop in.
Not at all.
Maybe they just don't like the city or whatever. Maybe they wanna come out for the peace and quiet. This will be twenty-four, seven. So maybe they'll wanna come out at two, three, five in the morning, be by themselves. But, you know, as I said before, you know, we make sure, you know, streets are clean, which I know they will be. All fire hydrants, anything that can be painted and shined, you know? And try to get some ideas to coordinate with Babylon Vault. Tammy Ray is, is, I mean, she's just unbelievable excited about this. I know Union Bridge Flood Zone will be having probably a beer dedicated to this project. So whatever we can think of, you know. You know, that opportunity's there for other people too, so, but.
Something in the newsletter about this?
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, this, like I say, is October ninth through thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. I think the, what did I say? The musical in the main would be?
Eleventh.
The eleventh, so we would just move it back a Saturday to, you know, enhance the project and, and our event, so.
So where's the setup? Where are they gonna be?
Be on the carnival grounds.
Okay.
So right here in town, not out at Babylon?
No.
Okay.
On the grass or?
I imagine on the grass. I, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but three-hundred feet. So details will be, I'm sure Babylon Vault is well aware of everything. They got, they're working on it. Tammy, maybe we have her to come to a town council meeting and explain it. I know she'll be willing to do that, so. But like I say, this, this is huge and we should be supporting it the best we can. All right, anything else? Announcements, August what is National Night Out? August sixth, National Night Out, so it's only a little ways away. If you belong to an organization, make sure that they are attending. And you need something, you know, supplies or whatever, let town staff know. I'm sure we got some funds to, to make it, now that you got one under your belt.
Thank you very much.
All right, anybody have anything else? All right, I wanna thank everybody for what they do and I appreciate all your efforts. Thank you. Do I hear a motion for adjournment?
I'll make that motion.
A second.
We have a motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor, sing and sign and say aye?
Aye.